Commissioner Bartel, can you hear us?
I sure can. Can you hear me? I can hear you. Can you hear me? Dan, can you hear me yet?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Okay, Dan, are we about ready? I don't think it's 3 o'clock. Or is that the timer? Okay. Nope. Right, yeah. All right. Is it turned on? Yep. Good evening. I would like to call the April 27th Planning Commission meeting to order. Dan, are you ready? Have you hit recording?
Yes.
Okay. So may I have a roll call?
Oh, I have it here. I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Bartel. Commissioner Lassen. I see you there, Commissioner Bartel. I didn't hear you. We'll work on your sound in a second.
I'm there.
Excellent. We got that. Thank you very much. Commissioner Corning. Commissioner Berlin. Commissioner Hernandez-Mahia. Vice Chair Ellsworth. And I received a note that Chair Piper was not going to be attending this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right. Please bear with me. I am filling the shoes of Chair Piper and may we have a flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want everyone to have a chance to read the minutes? Are there any changes? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for April 13th.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any business from the audience that is not on the agenda in any other place this evening? Seeing none? Communications from staff?
The only communications we have are related to a land use item that we will discuss this evening.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we have two quasi judicial land use hearings. The first one is DR 22-18, Boone's Crossing, Phase 6. With that, I'll open the hearing. For the Boone's Crossing, Phase 6 Consolidated Application, OR 22-18, MOC 22-02, and VAR 22-16, a design review for multifamily residential development of 94 townhouse-style dwellings. A modification of conditions request to remove a required commercial development component, as well as a variance request to allow a drive aisle to encroach within a setback. Okay. Are there any ex parte contacts with the applicant or site visits or any other conflict that would preclude you from making an impartial decision in this matter? Hearing none? Are there any challenges to the commission or to their commission in the declarations? Hearing none? Pardon me? Yes, we will take, we will ask later after the declarations, excuse me, after the hearing statement is read, then we will have a presentation by our staff, at which time the applicant will be able to make a presentation. We'll ask for anybody that wants to speak in favor of the project to speak. Then anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or against the project may speak. And once you have spoken in opposition, we will give the applicant the ability to respond and to give a rebuttal to any other concerns that were presented at that time.
So I understand that you're not moving right now, but who is?
No, we are going to have a presentation. Our staff is going to give us an overview of the project. We will have the opportunity to ask staff questions. We will then let the applicant speak and we, as the commission, will have the ability to ask those questions. Then we will ask for input for and against. And once we've heard all of that, we will close the hearing and then the commission will deliberate and make a decision. So the decision is several steps away. Okay? But we do, absolutely. No, we do expect to most likely make a decision tonight. There is an option if we wanted to continue it, but we will not make that decision until after all of the presentations have been made. Okay. Mackenzie, would you read the statement?
So both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report but are also as follows: Woodburn Development Ordinance Sections 2.02, 3.01 through 3.07, 3.09, 3.11, 4.01, 0.07, 4.02, 0.07, 5.03, 0.02, 5.03, 0.12, as well as Woodburn Statutory Development Ordinance 2543. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentation, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open.
Vice Chair Ellsworth. Thank you. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Can I jump in front of you for one second very quickly if you don't mind? Madam Chair. I know there's some folks in the audience who are looking to testify and I just wanted to make sure that everyone who wants to testify or wants what we call legal standing on this fills out one of those green sheets that we have floating around. Come see me if you need to get another one. I've been handing them out. What it needs is your name and your address on it. And the reason I mention it is it's really important that you do that because you heard the Assistant City Attorney talking about the right to appeal decisions. If you don't fill out that form and get standing or you haven't submitted evidence with your name and asked for that, you wouldn't have that. What will happen is everyone who fills that out with an address is going to get a copy of the final decision that's made by this body whenever it happens. And that will dictate and outline your opportunities for appeal. I just wanted to make sure. So if you want to testify here tonight in person, make sure you fill that out. But even if you don't, to get standing, you still need to fill that out. That was all. It's one of the points.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so we're here for the Boone's Crossing Phase 6 development. It's a Type 3 land use application package, including a design review, a modification of conditions request, and a variance application. Collectively, it's a Type 3 review and the Planning Commission holds a public hearing for all Type 3 applications and is the decision maker on those. So I will go ahead and enter the staff report and its attachments into the record. And for those of you in the room tonight, in front of you, you'll see two little packets printed out. These are the same two PDFs I emailed out to you all a couple hours ago. One is a staff memo outlining several recommended changes to the conditions and I'll go through that later. Commissioner Bartel, I'll bring it up on the screen when I go through it for you. And then the other item, well, first I will formally enter that memo into the record. And then the other item was an email I received earlier this afternoon from a resident, Mr. Michael Robertson, a piece of testimony that I'd like to enter into the record as well. So with that, I will go into the project here. Just to give everybody some bearing, we're in the south central part of town. Along the right side of the image, you can see North Pacific Highway running north-south. Now, let's see, if we go kind of towards the middle of the picture, we have Settlemeier Avenue turning into Boone's Ferry Road, cutting north-south through the picture here. We have Parr Road extending west here. That upper left corner is the Smith Creek subdivision and in the middle of the image, we have the Boone's Crossing subdivision. So tonight, the area we're looking at is this kind of last piece of the Boone's Crossing project outlined in yellow. If we zoom in a little bit closer on the site, it's a little under eight and a half acres. Pretty flat, undeveloped site there. And the picture on the right there is from our zoning map and you can see that light yellow color. That means it's in the single-family residential zoning district. But a really important part of tonight's project is that this property is within the Boone's Crossing Planned Unit Development, the PUD. It's a really important component here for, I guess, everything I'm about to explain about the project. PUDs outline specific development criteria for projects that seek flexibility from our development ordinance in exchange for giving the public certain benefits. So they get flexibility for standards in exchange for certain public benefits that they offer up to the city. So there are specific development approval criteria and standards for this specific site and for the planned unit development as a whole for this Boone's Crossing development. And to give you a little bit of context of that, this was originally applied for in 1997 and approved in 1999 by City Council via Ordinance 2246. Over the course of the early 2000s, there were some modifications approved to that original approval. There were also some changes of ownership to the property and just kind of as a result of these changes in ownership, this passage of time, it became apparent that there were some uncertainties and confusion about what was actually approved, what was actually required. So the City Council in 2016 entered into a statutory development agreement with four separate property owners and that was passed by Ordinance 2543. And just a little bit of background on what that agreement was, it sounds kind of intimidating. Basically, the city determined that it was in the best interest of the public to enter into this agreement and resolve these uncertainties regarding the terms and conditions of the approval, avoid potential litigation from those property owners, and overall encourage the development of housing and public improvements that would serve the residents. So essentially, it's kind of like a final decision, but it has some legal components to it. And as part of that statutory development agreement, there were some specific concepts that were approved for this Phase 6 part of the whole project. First, it was designated, there was some area designated here in yellow for 94 multifamily dwellings. Let's see, there was a three-acre public park component. And then there was also a component here in the bottom-left corner of the site set aside for a one-to-two acre neighborhood commercial development. Importantly here, it's still required, the statutory development agreement still requires a design review for all of these improvements besides the public park. The concept and the overall entitlement is captured within that agreement, but we still have to do a design review to make sure it's meeting standards like parking and setbacks and things like that. Notably, the public park component was obtained by the city in 2018 from the Phase 6 property owner at that time. And I'll go into it a little more towards the end of the presentation, but the city has been actively seeking involvement and input from the neighbors for what to improve that park with. So what type of equipment, playground, ball fields, paths, all of that. The city's been doing some open houses and seeking input on that. And I'll have some more information towards the end of the presentation on that, but that's moving forward. But that actually brings us to the first component of tonight's project. I want to start with the modification of conditions request. So the applicant is requesting to remove that commercial component, effectively making the rest of that yellow area housing instead of commercial. And this process of making this request was specifically outlined in the statutory development agreement as the correct process to go through. Basically, it kind of thought ahead to outline a method for the owner to make a request like this without having to go back to City Council and redo a whole development agreement, redo a whole PUD approval. It was just kind of a side application that could make that request. So this is consistent with that agreement and staff is supportive of the request to remove that commercial component because, one, it provides a little more room for them to accommodate that housing and it's also consistent with a lot of what we've seen in the last few years. The commission has seen a number of residential projects come before you for, excuse me, yeah, residential projects for commercially zoned properties. A lot of multifamily apartment projects in commercial zones come before you lately. So there's more of a demand for housing in these areas than there is commercial. Moving on to the design review component of the project. Again, it's 94 dwellings across 22 buildings. The applicants propose them in a two-story townhouse style of development. I'll show you some elevation views of what those buildings will look like here in just a second, but I want to run through the site plan just for a brief minute here. So along the left side of the picture, this is Boone's Ferry Road. We've got Iris Street, kind of in the white here, framing the right and top side of the picture. And then the South Arterial is actually on the bottom here. And those are street improvements that the applicant will be constructing as part of the project. In terms of Iris Street, it's mostly just sidewalk and street trees, but the other two streets will be widening the street, putting in the pavement, the curb, drainage gutters, sidewalks, and all of that. And then in the site itself, the buildings here are in yellow. And then in the site itself, the buildings here are in yellow, landscaping throughout in green. And then this dark gray that runs through here, kind of looks like it might be streets. They're actually not public streets. They're, I call them in my staff report, I refer to them as drive aisles. And they're kind of like a private alley. So the property owner will own it and maintain it. They will act as fire lanes, so there won't be parking allowed along them. They allow emergency responders to get to the buildings. That's how residents will enter the property and get to their house. And then there's two access points allowed for this property. And they are aligned with the two intersections on Iris Street here and here. Because Boones Ferry Road and the South Arterial, they're arterial streets, the city limits accesses onto those streets because they're intended to help vehicles flow through at a higher rate. They get higher traffic, so we limit the access points on them. The final element I wanted to just touch on briefly, there's a couple areas in the middle of the site here and here that are open space areas. So there'll be a gathering space as well as a little play structure in those areas. Looking at those elevation views of the buildings themselves, the development is split between a variety of two-car garage units as well as one-car garage units. So each dwelling will have its own garage. Thirty-one of the units are two-car garage units, and then 63 are the one-car garage units. 1,500 to 2,000 square feet each. The height, as you can see, it's a 2,000, or excuse me, a two-story dwelling is what we're looking at here. I know the applicant made a point to have it fit in with the scale of the housing around it throughout the rest of the phases of the Boones Crossing subdivision. And I also wanted to point out here, they are exceeding the minimum parking requirement with this project. Next, I wanted to talk about the variance request. And this is specifically relating to those drive aisles, or you can think of them as kind of like alleyways that run through the site. The standard requirement is for every drive aisle to be set back at least five feet from a property line. And the applicant's for the most part meeting that requirement, except for this small portion here outlined in red. Various site constraints, as well as a desire to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood in terms of their scale and design, just led to this one portion of drive aisle right up against the property line here along the park property. Staff is supportive of the request. Again, for the most part, they are meeting the standard except for this one location. This spot is up against an open area, so it's not next to another building. The boomerang shape, as well as the desire to be a little more compatible with the rest of the neighborhood, has kind of constricted the overall layout. But they've been able to put together a design that they're proud of and staff is very pleased Wanted to touch also on some transportation items. So part of their application, they provided a transportation impact analysis. City staff reviewed this document, as well as our third-party traffic consultant that we hire to help with these reviews. And there were three main recommendations, conditions recommended as a result here. First, related to transit, staff's recommending a condition of approval for a new bus shelter at the Parr Road-Sattlemeyer-Front Street intersection here, circled in yellow. So the site we're looking at is down here, and this intersection is about a third of a mile north of the site. There's a bus stop there right now. It doesn't have a shelter or anything there. So staff's recommending either to install a shelter there or pay a fee in lieu of $15,000. Second, the transportation impact analysis identified safety concerns at two intersections, first being the I-5 northbound off-ramp. So there's some safety concerns with the signal timing at that intersection, a higher crash rate. So staff's recommending a condition of approval to have the applicant pay $5,000 as a proportionate share contribution towards updating that signal timing. And then a separate $5,000 contribution towards the same intersection circled in yellow here. That one was also identified as having an elevated crash rate. So a $5,000 proportionate share contribution towards a study of that intersection to determine what would be a better design for that intersection or improvement. Right now, it's a four-way stop, so that would go towards determining what would make that intersection better. And then lastly, staff's recommending a condition to have the developer install wall-mounted bike racks in every garage to encourage bicycling as another mode of transportation. Just to kind of summarize here, staff's recommending approval with conditions. The development is consistent with that statutory development agreement. Generally, these conditions address street improvements, transportation mitigations, utilities easements, lighting on the property, and also the interface with the adjacent park. And do want to take this moment here to go through some of those changes that I'm recommending. And I'm going to bring that up on the screen here. So I'll just read through this really quickly, because I know I didn't give you very much time earlier today to go through it. So earlier this week, I met with the Community Services Director here at the city. His name is Jesse Cuomo. I wanted to receive an update on those park plans for the adjacent park next door. And through my discussion with him, it was determined that a fee-in-lie option, rather than some of the required improvements to the park frontage and that border with the park, a fee-in-lie option would be in the best interest of the city. Basically, if the park gets developed first, the city might have a different design or seek to pursue something alternative to what was required to meet our development ordinance here. So the fee-in-lie option would mean there wouldn't be any wasted time and materials going into constructing something that would get ripped out. And the city would also be able to recoup some of the cost of putting in those improvements. Separately from all of that, there was also a mistake in reference that I would like to fix through one of these recommendations here. So I ran this all by the applicant. They're supportive of the changes. And my recommendation is to, if you make a motion of approval tonight, to include the changes recommended in this memo as part of your motion. So quickly going through those recommendations here. Condition six, this is that reference that was incorrect here. So it's actually a cross-section they illustrate on their proposed plans. This is consistent with the cross-section for the South Arterial improvements of what was already constructed for the remaining phase, or the previous phases of the subdivision. It was a cross-section approved back in 1999, and then again reaffirmed through 2016. And this is just acknowledging that it's consistent with that statutory development That's the only change to condition six. Condition seven talks about the street frontage improvements for Iris Street. So that is mostly limited to sidewalk and street trees. And staff is recommending a fee-in-lie option specifically just for the frontage along the park. And I have an image on the next page that I'll show you that might be a little more helpful to explain it. But basically, this would allow a fee-in-lie, again, to help the city recoup costs and not result in a sidewalk being put in that ultimately the city wants in a different This fee would be determined by a cost estimate from a licensed civil engineer. The applicant would provide that estimate, and the Public Works Director would vet the estimate to make sure it's a reasonable number. And then condition 16, similarly, we're recommending a fee-in-lie for the fence that staff is recommending to be along the park border. And for this, I'm going to go to the image here. So the condition requires the applicant install a fence along this red line, a six-foot-tall chain-link fence here with black vinyl coating. And that would be, one, just to help screen the park from the housing development and just act as a boundary. You know, if there's a soccer ball that gets kicked, it hits the fence instead of going into the development. So staff is recommending allowing a fee-in-lie option. If the city wants the fence in a different location, or if they want a different height, this just allows the city to put that fence in where we want it and recoup the cost of putting the fence in. So that's where the fee-in-lie is $37,200. That is a $40 per foot estimate. That's how that fee was determined. So those are the recommended changes to conditions. Applicant is again supportive of those changes. And I can help answer any questions if you have any further about that. This is the concept so far for that park. I just wanted to show it to you to see what's being talked about right now. It's very early on still in the design, so it could change. But generally speaking, we're looking at a path going through there and play area, maybe some sports courts here. But this has been added to next year's budget, so the city does anticipate building it out in the near future. And again, the specifics may change, but that's not really part of tonight's discussion. I just wanted to show it to you for your reference. That's what I have for you, though. I can help answer any questions.
So there's no on-street parking?
Correct. These dark gray areas through the property here are not, they're not streets, technically speaking. They function like streets when you drive through them, but they're more like an alleyway. Like if you think about the Smith Creek development or some of the newer subdivisions that have alleys serving garages, that's kind of what this is. So each dwelling will have its own private driveway here in that lighter gray color. And they'll also have their own garage.
Will there be guest park?
That was actually something that staff brought up with the applicant early on as a suggestion. They opted not to provide it. They are exceeding our minimum parking requirement, so it's not a requirement we were able to impose on them. It was something that was recommended early on, and they opted not to provide it.
Can I ask a question? I was just going to follow up on that, just for, more to Dan. He knows it better than I do. While it's not part of this exact approval, is the idea that there would be on-street parking along Iris for the park?
That is correct. Currently, it is on the north and east side. Street parking's allowed on the north and this, I guess, this outer side. And City Council is likely going to be considering putting it on the other side. There's no driveways except for these two here along this inner side, so there'll be more street parking available.
You mean the City Council might put parking on both sides of Iris Street? Is that what you're thinking?
No, sorry. It would shift from the further side to the nearer side, just to allow for more on-street parking. On the further side, that's where the homes are. They each have their own driveway onto. I can actually, let's see here if I can get to a better image here. Yeah, right there. So you can see here, these homes have driveways. The aerial image is not quite updated. All of these homes have since been built and occupied. But they each have a driveway going on the street here. So by shifting the parking to be on the other side, you allow a lot more parking on the street.
The thing is, today, people leave their garages for storage. They don't leave it for their cars. They're parked in the driveway, and then there's no extra parking anywhere.
Yes.
And what about Boones Ferry? Would you be, some sort of plan? Because I could imagine also people, if it's not stated or set, people parking on Boones Ferry?
There's currently no street parking allowed on Boones Ferry Road. And that would be, so that would be continued. The same improvements that are north of here would be improved, or continued, south to this point here. So that's that center turn lane, a travel lane in each direction, bike lanes, and then curb and sidewalk.
Dan, what makes this a planned unit development? Usually, there's a wet area or something. Why is this a planned unit development?
That was, again, part of that 1997 application.
We didn't get to see, we didn't get to see that.
Correct.
So, I mean, I can see we're getting the three acres. But there was also another element that now, although this seems to me like a better option, but usually, there's a trade-off, and it seems like we've given away one-third of the trade-off.
Can you?
Well, by not having the commercial development component.
Right now, that is a requirement through this statutory development agreement, and that's what the applicant's here requesting to remove. I think it's just a sign of market trends, you know, broadly speaking. There's not as high of a demand for retail areas as there are for housing areas. One thing I do, I can explain a little bit further. Part of the approval for this phase, there were limits put on what type of commercial uses could be there. They were very much focused on neighborhood commercial use. Preschools, daycares, you know, family-oriented services, barber shops, beauty shops, some small offices like banks, you know. Very much focused on more of something that would serve the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And they have not been allowed to increase the number of units. It's still the 94 that was originally agreed. So there's just a little more space between the units, or a little larger units?
Or bigger, maybe that's it.
Right, they have a little more space to accommodate those 94 units. In this case, they've chosen to pursue a two-story townhouse-style unit rather than what we have typically seen over the last few years as a three-story apartment building for multifamily. So this is actually a pretty unique multifamily concept here in Woodburn.
I think, or just to confirm, the designs that I've seen are all for three-bedroom, whether it's a one-garage or two-spaced garage. Is that correct?
I can confirm. I know we have, the applicant here can also talk about the unit configurations.
Because that would be my concern for a one-car garage, and then just one space outside.
Do you guys have that information? Okay, then I will defer to the applicant when they come up to present, to answer that. Yeah.
All right. So let me go ahead and ask, do any of the commissioners online have questions? Let me open up a space for you to speak and ask questions of Dan before I call up the applicant. Okay, hearing none. Do we have any other questions for Dan before I call up the applicant? Hearing none, I'd like to invite the applicant up to present. Please give us your name and address, and Chris is gonna make sure that your microphone is on.
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Dan, for your great presentation. My name's Spencer Emmerich. I'm with CB2 Architects. Our office is at 500 Liberty Street, Southeast, Suite 100, Salem Morgan, 97301. With me is Gretchen Stone. She is land use and interior designer in our office. So to kind of go back and answer your question, yes, they are all three-bedroom units. One of the thing about this site is, Dan had mentioned that in the beginning stages, if we were to do commercial, it would have to be, it would have been more towards that three-story walk-up apartment styled and designed. And we thought that wasn't appropriate with single-family homes in the area. So once we went in the direction with the townhomes, the standards set by the city with setbacks, parking, driveways, sidewalks, backyard requirements, code separations, there really isn't much space to add additional parking. So we focused on trying to get as much as we possibly could while meeting all the design standards for this project. One of the questions by the city was the additional parking. As the applicant, we felt that the open spaces were gonna be more of a benefit to this community than adding a few parking spots, because it would be pretty limited, the amount that you could add to the site. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
That bothers me, because I like to have people over and entertain, and where do they park? If it becomes a problem, you know, it's, listen.
So as you can see on the site, it is maxed out. There are maybe two or three locations where there is open space, which is also required by the city. So we'd either have to have a variance to go away from that open space and provide parking there, which I think is an agreeable option if that is preferred by the city. But we would only be able to add maybe four to six spots in those locations.
Which would not make sense, since they're both down here.
Right.
To live on the other side.
I know another project, they allow for a few cars to park.
So, and that's kind of the difficult part with the shape of the site is...
Sorry, my daughter's getting picked up. Yeah. Thank you.
Is it, going back to the standards that we have to meet, is, really limits what we can do on the site.
You can eliminate a couple of townhouses.
Let me just interject here. So I think the other issue related with the site is that we're limited on access as well. So we were allowed two driveways to get into the site. And so, and those are both off of Iris. So even trying to get the site to lay out so that we could have circulation, fire access, and provide, again, we are actually providing more parking than is required traditionally. Well, in Woodburn, the minimum parking requirement is two spaces per unit. And for multifamily, it's two spaces, and only 50% of those are required to be covered. And so what we tried to do is, ideally, obviously, we would, all of these units would have two-car garages, but it doesn't, it just doesn't program, we can't program those spaces to work that way. And so the idea is that we have two-car garages where we were able to make those work, and then there's actually ample space in the driveways to allow additional parking there. And then, obviously, the one-car garages, there's a space behind that in the driveway for those. Even if we lost a couple of units, we wouldn't gain much parking because of the site configuration. It's not a rectangular site. We would, you know, you might lose, you know, if we'd lost a building on, or a unit on the end, we might be able to tuck a couple more spaces in there. But parking spaces have specific requirements for size and access, and so there wouldn't really be benefit to doing that.
And each apartment or townhouse is three-bedroom?
So the requirement is that these be multifamily units. They're designed as a townhouse-style apartment. If we had put in a traditional apartment complex, we could still have three-bedroom units. They would still only be required two parking spaces. So the trade-off was to do a townhouse-style development with two-story units and try and park as, you know, provide as much parking as we could and then, or put in a traditional three-story walk-up with surface parking areas that probably would not provide any more parking, and in fact, probably would provide less. So, and I think we can appreciate why you're asking that question. Parking is an issue all over the place. And I can appreciate the question, and I understand why you have concerns about that. But again, this property is zoned. It is zoned residential, single-family. However, the PUD required that this be multifamily. And so we're trying to answer that by providing a development that is more complimentary and has less impact on those single-family homes that are also located in the neighborhood.
I can definitely appreciate that. And, I mean, as far as the design aesthetics, they look nice. My concern still remains in, like, again, three-bedroom and just one-car garage with one. I know you've met the minimum requirements, but it's just one of those things we see in town that, you know, the streets get filled with parks and cars parking along it. So it's just that concern that we know that, as far as the needs of this town. And maybe it's also on us, you know, we need to probably revisit some of those things, because again, parking has become a bit of an issue. And, you know, we all, as you already stated, garages tend to get used more as a storage, and so you lose already that parking. Had it been just already a two, you know, kind of like the two outside, then you're set a little bit more. We just know that realistically, there's gonna be at least two cars in there, and it's gonna be very, at least two, you know.
I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you. Parking is an issue. Unfortunately, we're constrained by the, not only the site size, but the configuration of it, and again, access, fire access, pedestrian paths, landscape requirements, all of those things. And so, again, I think the trade-off to do a townhouse-style versus a three-story walk-up, which, again, would not necessarily provide any additional parking. And I would guess, just based on the site configuration, we would be at the minimum parking requirement.
Is there a minimum number of units that are required?
I don't recall if there was a density minimum. Again, we did also take two acres out that were earmarked for commercial to try and offset that.
So how would that work if you're required, if the commercial element was required, then you would have received rental or sales, the building would be sold? I mean, are you better off now that you have these two acres of units rather than the commercial?
I think that the reality of it is, commercial space is not as, it's just not as desirable.
Well, I'm going back to the agreement that this property had with the city, though, to start with, that we're now agreeing or may agree to.
Sure. I can't speak to the PUD. That, the two acres that was identified for commercial, that was part of the original PUD. So whether or not it was, would it have been better to develop it that way?
But the trade-off is, is that we allow certain density of building for a certain amount of public benefit. And that, am I mistaken, that that commercial component was a public benefit component?
As part of the original PUD, the commercial element was likely included because the original developer saw a benefit in having it there. Again, this is the single-family residential zone, so normally, commercial uses aren't allowed here.
But it's PUD.
Correct. So it wouldn't be something the public saw, or the city saw as a public benefit. It was likely an element that the developer, originally back in the late 90s, saw a benefit of including.
Okay, so that agreement doesn't look at that as a public benefit. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
That's actually a flexibility that the city is granting in exchange for a public benefit.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for any of the commissioners online?
Hi, it's Abby. I really, I didn't really understand an answer to Commissioner Hernandez-Meja's question about parking and the fact that these are three-bedroom units with one parking space, that's a garage that is typically used for storage. Where is parking on this map that we're looking at on the screen? So if they only are given one spot, they're more likely gonna need at least two spots. Where are they supposed to park?
The development's been designed with garages and driveways. I think similarly to a single-family home, they're only required to provide two parking spaces. So we provided more than that on the development site. I can't personally speak to why people, I mean, I understand why people store things in their garage. That's not the intent of these garages. The intent for these garages is that you would be parking in them.
So what happens if they don't, though, and they park in the alleyways? Or will their cars be towed? I, as, I'm concerned with everybody else who is parking in their garage, trying to get to their home, if the alleyways are blocked by people who are not using their garages for parking, and if there's a plan for that.
So that's a great question. Parking is not allowed in those alleyways, and it would be signed as such. And so if towing was necessary, then towing would occur.
Are the garages only accessible from the front of the unit? And they have those from the alley?
So the garages are accessed from that drive aisle. And then there is an entry into the unit from the garage. I don't, do we provide floor plans?
Yeah, we have floor plans.
Okay. And I don't, except for maybe on some of those end units where we might be able to add an additional door, a man door. I think that the garages themselves, though, are, you know, again, traditionally, you open the door, drive in, close the door, and then you'd enter your unit. So people are getting out of their vehicle and entering their home within the garage. Yeah.
Not all of them. Some do.
Yeah. Some enter from behind and have their front door on the other side.
But then they park, a lot of them are able to park in front, even though their entrance is in the back. There's still a little bit of parking along the streets, where we don't have that here, because we don't have any streets here. We only have drive aisles.
And again, there is no parking allowed in those, and they will be signed as such.
I know you have the numbers here, but just in case it's frustrating, you have them on your head. Because it seems like there's several. Do you know how many units are the ones that have just the one-car garage?
I think it was 63.
Out of 94.
Correct. I wish it were backwards, yeah. I know that's not a new, it's just, given the situation of the town, we know what ends up happening, and so we're definitely trying to get to it before construction happens.
Does anyone have any more questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will now ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to provide testimony in favor, in favor of this?
Vice Chair, I received some, I asked everyone who wanted to testify to fill out a green sheet, which is in front of you now. Some, I let them know that some people didn't want to speak. You might just want to ask them if they wanted to come up and testify or just fill out a form. And I repeat that, just to anyone else, if you didn't fill out a form and now you want to speak, now's the time. You can just fill out the form and come on up, or just fill it out and let us know your comments.
So right now, we're still asking for those in favor, if anyone wants to speak in favor of this. Hearing none, I will go through the green sheets, and then I will ask if anyone, did not fill out a green sheet, wants to speak, okay?
Before you get started, Vice Chair Ellsworth, there's a gentleman online named Gilberto Villanueva who is asking if he will be able to testify, to provide testimony, even though he's online. And I don't know the answer to that question.
We should be able to have him testify. If he is speaking in favor, he's welcome to unmute and speak now. If he's wanting to speak in opposition, I would ask him to hold off. Actually, let's go ahead and have the gentleman unmute himself. Please give us your name and address, and you are welcome to speak in opposition.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, I live in Iris, 1596. And I'm in opposition to this project. One, because we live, we've been living here in Woodburn for many years. And before, where I used to live, over by Walmart, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood. And then Lennar and Dear Horton came in and did the development outside Harvard. And it just became a hassle, safety. I have two kids at home that we were in peace because they were running outside. There was a lot of foot traffic coming in, coming out, big trucks of construction. And I just don't think that this land in front of Iris should be for a multifamily. It should be for something else. We're okay with the park. I totally agree with the park. It's just, in my opinion, my honest opinion. I think we should do something better if you want to bring value to the site. I think, um, we should do something better if you want to bring value to the city of Woodburn. Why don't you build another high school, another school, uh, instead of bringing more people from outside of Woodburn? Since we already have a lot of foot traffic here from other developments outside, like by the outlet mall, you know, Safeway, uh, West Coast built the other apartments accomplice of 99. Uh, they're going to do another, uh, big, um, development over by I-5 by Walmart. So I just think that the population is going to be, obviously is going to grow. But I think education is more important than other things.
Thank you. I see another hand raised. Dan, can you see whose hand is raised?
Chambers guest, can you identify yourself, please?
Uh, yes, this is Larry Benetta Chambers. We live at 1488 Iris Street. And, uh, we oppose, uh, this particular plan. Mainly be, same thing as what the other gentleman was saying, one of our neighbors. If you actually live on this street, um, and to look at the width of the street, uh, as we pass by, you can barely get with the, with the width of the road. If I'm, if I'm driving down Iris to get out of the complex and someone else is coming in, that's just enough space. So when you add to that and you add traffic, uh, with folks coming in because they live here and then you're adding a park and people wanting to come and partake in the park, that is going to be a nightmare for those of us who live here and it will become a safety issue. It's, it's just, it's not a good design. And I, I, I'm concerned about the, the devalue of the neighborhood and I'm concerned about unnecessary chaos based on this very limited design. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else online that wishes to speak, so I'm. And you're going to have to forgive me. Um, Sydney Avila?
That's me.
Hi, welcome. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sydney Vandal Avila. I live at 1447 Sunflower Street. Um, just one street up from Iris Street. And for, I, while I vehemently disagree with the multifamily style homes in this particular area, I like the townhome style. However, the parking is a major issue. The older parts of this neighborhood where you can park on both sides of this street, you can hardly get one car down those roads. Um, our newer side, the PUD 5, is restricted on one side of the street. Parking is still an issue. There are still a lot of cars parked on the street. There are cars that do park on the wrong side of the street. It is a major issue. There is no, there's nowhere for these cars to park. We've seen in other parts of the community where these park, if parking does get overflowed, these streets become a mess. People are parking where they shouldn't be parking. They're blocking people's driveways. That happens on my street. I live on the side of the street where you can't park. People will block my driveway from time to time. It's not ideal. Um, and I do, I agree with what they, the person who spoke before me was saying about the unnecessary chaos that those kinds of things can bring. Um, I'm very supportive of a park. In terms of the removal of the commercial piece and not having control over the PUD, deciding that parts of this should be used for commercial, commercial use, we as residents don't seem to have control over the PUD deciding that this area should be used for multifamily use. So I don't think that's a very good excuse for not developing that for commercial use. I do think there is use and need for childcare in all communities. The availability of childcare in this nation as a whole is frightening. So those types of things are absolutely necessary in these communities. There are a lot of younger families in this area that do need childcare. We do need more resources. This town is growing. More resources, commercial resources especially, will be more than necessary. So I don't think that removing that aspect of this plan is advisable if we're going to proceed in this manner of this multifamily home section. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, this one has three, so Michael Man, oh, Manser?
Yes, thank you.
Please, welcome. Yep. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Name's Mike Manser. Yeah, address is also in Iris Street, um, 1472. I also oppose this. Uh, I, I had a couple of questions though, just for clarity. I'm brand new to this environment and such. Reference earlier multiple times was made to staff. I assume that's city staff and that you're here representing city staff? Is that correct or?
That's correct.
All right, okay. Could you bring up the map of all six phases that you had there once before? My understanding is that this, um, plot was originally negotiated, I guess, or whatever, in, in 1996 or something like that. I think somebody said 1999. What portion of these phases were started at that time?
In the 90s?
Yeah. When this, when this, when the agreement to be able to do all this and use Phase 6 with, uh, high-density or multifamily housing, what portion of the, all these phases were built at that time?
Uh, none of them. That was, the 94 multifamily was part of the original.
So the people who were able to express opinions about this development, none of them lived anywhere near this at that time. Is that correct?
Presumably. I wasn't here back in the 90s.
Well, I understand. But so when was the last time that the community had a hearing on this? When these houses were in place? Because I'm, my concern, part of my concern is that some of these decisions might have been made or committed to with the PUD or whatever, many years ago by people who live nowhere near this particular location. And so now, all those areas have been populated and people have purchased homes, all of them single-family homes. And it, it's a bit, um, disruptive or discouraging to find, in fact, one of the other things, when I purchased our home last year, I specifically asked the builder and the people selling what was going to be happening across the street and they had no idea. At least that's what they told us. And it would have been nice if that would have been part of the disclosure they made at the time to people buying homes, that this might have been part of the plan. So, um, I would, and then the parking is another thing. I don't understand. They seem to avoid, uh, answering a pretty simple, straightforward question about, I understand there is a maximum density or units of 94, but I don't think there was a minimum. Somebody asked that question. So if you brought up that design again of the layout of this, of those units, and I'm not arguing that they should do this because I don't think there should be multifamily homes. I think they should be single-family homes in that area. But it would be very easy to give up one unit in each of those buildings and put some kind of additional parking between those units so that you, because as somebody pointed out, people are going to have dinners and have friends coming over. Where are those people going to park? My understanding of their response was, well, there is no place to park unless they park in your driveway, which, as somebody pointed out, has probably got your own cars in that. So that's a major, seems to me a major flaw in this particular design. Minimally, the density, and especially since they're asking for an exception to the commercial part, why not give up the commercial part and put up enough parking so that at least you're not having to deal with the parking problem? Those are just a few of the things that crossed my mind that I was wanting to, uh, express a view on. Uh, I think there may be some other concerns, but, um, that's what I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellsworth, um, if it's helpful, if, Dan, if you wouldn't mind going back to that history slide, I can answer a few of the questions related to the timeline. So, um, looking at this map of the Boones Ferry or Boones Crossing phases. So, um, the 1999 approval actually didn't have six phases. It only had four initially. And what happened is essentially those four got split up into six when, uh, different developers bought and, you know, broke up the development into smaller segments. And, uh, Phases 1 and 2 were the initial phases. They were built out in the early 2000s. And then basically the recession happened and so there was no further phases were built out. And so going into, um, 2013, there was interest from developers on, you know, the Phases 3, 4, and 5, which were the remaining single-family, um, phases at that point in time. But there were questions about whether or not the development was still vested to permit those to, you know, phases to continue. And there were questions, again, as Dan brought up, um, related to the park properties that were supposed to be guaranteed as part of this project, as well as additional infrastructure that was needed, including a lift station for, um, moving storm and sewer. So, you know, those infrastructure pieces and questions needed to be answered before the city would permit additional phases to be built. That approval, um, those additional resolutions were completed in 2016. And there was, um, two opportunities for public hearing in 2016. We did have a number of residents that came out that lived in Phases 1 and 2 of the development at that time. That statutory development was ultimately approved and that's when Phase 3 construction actually began. And so you kind of see the other additional phases built out after 2016. So Phase 3 occurred, um, you know, in about 2017, 2018 got started and then the subsequent phases 4 and 5. But that approval in 2016 never changed, um, the, the multifamily component, um, moving ahead. When that 2016 approval occurred, it basically reaffirmed that multifamily was going to happen with, again, the guarantee of the 94 units. And part of that was tied to that dedication of the parkland. So when that dedication of the parkland happened, the vestiture of the units occurred at that time.
So was the parkland related to the other phases or just this, it was related to?
So it was related to the other, so the other phases couldn't get built unless the parkland was dedicated, but the parkland was owned by the Phase 6 owner. And so the Phase 6 owner wanted to ensure that they could also move ahead and develop their multifamily that they were promised by the city back in the 90s and they didn't want to dedicate that parkland. And so it was a little bit of a chicken for the egg where, you know, they dedicated the parkland up front so that Phases 3, 4, and 5 could get built with the understanding that they would always be able to come back and build the multifamily component.
And also haven't state laws changed too?
Yes.
So that's, you know, one of the reasons, the multifamily things in residential, single-family.
Mixed, mixed housing, yeah. Middle housing. Sure. The middle housing, um, new legislation that came down from the state two years ago, actually didn't necessarily change this development because the initial approval back in 1999 always considered that this would be a multifamily. And they actually, I went back to the initial findings and pursuant to like the gold 10 findings that were done to actually annex this into the city. You know, the city wanted to see a mix of different types of housing in, not just this phase, but other phases of the development as well. So they wanted to see smaller lots and townhouses even back in 1999. It's just that it's taken this long for somebody to bring a proposal with townhouses. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have, uh, Michael Robertson. Would you come forward? Give your name and address. Thank you, Mackenzie.
Michael Robertson, 1426 Iris Street. Uh, I also agree with, against all the questions that are raised about this property. I only, we only have one question, since it's going to be built anyway, is why is there no exit directly on the Boones Ferry Road for this property? Everything is coming out on Iris Street. You have 92 houses. I live at the intersection of Iris and Autumn. And so I'm going to be seeing 100, 150 cars a day just coming in and 150 cars coming out, right in front of my house. Why, why isn't there an exit from the development itself onto Boones Ferry? Everything has to be detoured around on Iris. Why? Doesn't make sense.
Dan, I believe you covered that in your presentation. Can you explain that for the commission, please?
Yeah, let me pull up a slide to help. One sec.
What if you had a, what if you had a fire in that lower section there in one of those residences? Emily, it's just that, you know, the fire department has to come through all these little alleyways to get to it.
So, uh, Boones Ferry Road is considered a minor arterial street. And, uh, the street to the south here is also going to be an arterial street. Uh, eventually, the city plans for that southern arterial to connect between 99E and Beaufort Road to help, uh, kind of like, uh, 214 does for the city, uh, just on the south side. So both of those streets being arterial streets are limited in the access points because they will function as a higher-volume street. Uh, eventually, this intersection here is likely going to be a, a traffic light. Uh, once it's fully built out, um, that's the, the.
So 10 years from now, all these residents here, all these 92, most of them are going to come out on Iris. And I would say at least a third of them will come out on Iris and Autumn. And so again, you'll have 100, 150 cars a day. There's no traffic lights. And that's not counting delivery people, neighbors. It's a nightmare. That's not counting the people who already live there. Doesn't make sense.
Can I just add a question to that because I couldn't hear the answer? Is there a reason why this?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Just for folks on the phone call.
Yeah, I just wondering why, per the map, the arterial access, not straight onto Boones Ferry, but on the most southern side road, for example, cannot be connected. I, I just don't understand the logic there, as well as the connection to Boones Ferry.
Are you referring to these, uh, little stubs here?
Yes.
Uh, so those, there are certain minimum distances between intersections that have to be maintained. These are public works, civil engineering standards. So it's just site distance, minimum distances between intersection points for safety. Again, and this, these both being arterial streets, uh, access points are limited.
So that Iris Street and that new road that's being built, you can't put anything between that because there's some kind of rule? But because it's, it's too short for an access?
I can see because they're quite close to another entry in, in all of these sites that an accident can easily happen because there's two exits onto a bigger road.
Yes, but it looks to me like.
I'm sorry. Can I interrupt here?
No.
We're actually taking testimony and we're not having a dialogue at this point. At some point, we are going to deliberate. So I just want to let you know that you're welcome to ask those questions and as we are considering them, we will then ask, ask the staff. But we're not in a, we're not in a space where we are allowing you to debate with our staff. I don't know if you can understand the slight nuance there.
No, I do.
But if you would, if you have some questions you would like us to ask of staff or we consider as we deliberate, I am really happy to take those notes. But, um, I also want to make sure that everybody that has signed up to speak has a chance to speak and that we're following the rules of the hearing. Um, otherwise. Otherwise, we can get into some, some issues. So if you have a specific question you would like addressed, let us know and we can take notes. And if we, if we feel we want to have that discussion with staff, we will. So I apologize if that seems a little harsh, but I'm just trying to keep us on track.
I dispute the, that there can't be an access from this development, only if it's out there. If there's a law, a rule, but I see, if you go up the highway there, there's all kinds of roads that come out that are much shorter than the distance from there to the other end of this thing. So I just want to know what the, what the rule is. Now, what's the law?
Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. And I'd like to invite Rudy Perez. Has Rudy left? And Catherine?
Pettit.
Pettit, thank you. Please come forward. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Kathy Pettit and I live at 1410 Iris. I live on the corner of Boones Ferry and Iris. Basically.
If we can just sit and speak into the microphone so the commissioner's online.
Basically, I'm the first, well, next to the corner house, but nobody is ever there. So I count me as the first house. Anyway, I spend a lot of time outside in my yard. And the last few days with this really nice weather, I've been out there reading. And just with the traffic that has come along at the end of Iris, it used to dead in, in Mike's house, right there, no traffic, no traffic, just occasional traffic, I mean, people coming in occasionally. But since that whole housing development came through, we have two other streets, but for some reason, there's iron gates there and they're locked and they are not used at all. So nobody can go up and down those streets. That means everybody is coming down my street. And because I'm at the end, I see everybody come and I see everybody go and I see all the vehicles in between, all the trucks that were hauling garbage back and forth while they were building the homes. It made a terrible mess and they never cleaned it up, dropping rocks and, and dirt and everything on the street in front of my house. I, I have looked out at that field that they want to develop now for four years. I have a beautiful south view. I can watch the sunset. It's awesome. They are going to put two-story buildings right across the street. If you bring up that map that's up there, that you had of the, of the, where they're going to put the housing in, I am at, yes, I'm right there on my border. People are speeding. People have their radios up to full blast. I know you guys are not in control of it. I know that's not your guys' fault. But what I'm saying is, is you're going to make, this division you want to put in here is going to make my life a living hell because there's, the traffic that goes up and down that street, my house gets dirty from all the stuff they stir up and from the trucks that dump stuff all over the street. It's very upsetting to me. I'm 70 years old and I thought this would be where I lived till I died or had to go into a nursing home. Now I'm thinking, I've got to move. I can't handle all this noise, all this traffic. I have two pets that I let out in the front yard with me and thank God they're good. But these people are speeding. They're not, there's no speed bumps, there's no stop sign. They come in off of Boones Ferry going 70 miles an hour, and I know this for a fact because I've lived there long enough, and they turn down Iris and they race down the street. This is not fair. I've been living peacefully for four years and now it's going to be taken away by some multifamily homes or whatever you're calling them. And, and, and it's going to depreciate my home. So now not only am I going to have to live with this mess, and you guys, there is no parking in, in Woodburn there in that development. Everybody's parking in front of other people's houses and they're parking streets away. If there's not enough room for parking for this development, then it shouldn't go up. They either have to take something away so they have enough to, to supply the needs that have to be met. Or there, or if it gets passed, they're going to dump all their cars on my street. And like she said, it's not big enough for two, for a car parked over there and two cars to go in and out. It's not big enough. So then you have to sit and wait for the, somebody to pass so that you can go through. I don't, I'm, I'm very, very upset because this is affecting my life. I don't want to move. I'm seven years old. I don't want to move again. But I'm feeling like I have, I'm being forced out. Because they can't figure out a better plan than this. I have to move. Well, I was there first. And doggone it, I have a right to speak up for my neighborhood and for myself. It's not fair. If it's not enough room, then they can't do it. It's that simple to me. And if they do get allowed to do it, it's going to affect all of us. We have to put up with it, not them. We have to live there and we have to live in the mess. And it's not fair. And you've got to remember, Boones Ferry is 55 miles an hour. I seen a truck come down, four-wheel drive, hop the curb, hop everything, took out a fire hydrant and took out a guy's front house and the front of his house and his garage. Why? Because they go too fast. So the city needs, you guys got to realize that Boones Ferry, as it goes into, to Newburgh, it's a tiny little one-way each direction. It's got houses lined up and schools lined up and parks lined up. And right now, if you get out there anytime after four, you're, you've got anywhere from 10-plus cars lined up down that street just, just to turn on Newburgh. It's only a two-lane road. And when you get onto Newburgh, it's only a two, two-lane road. And it's plugged up constantly. If you, you have to leave a half hour early just to get through Boones Ferry and onto Newburgh, and then the Newburgh all the way to the freeway, backed-up traffic, backed-up traffic. I don't think the city is taking into consideration the number of people that are going to be coming in and, and what that's going to do to the entire area there. It's too small. The Boones Ferry Road is too small and Newburgh is too small with one lane in each direction. It's a nightmare already. I, I don't know. I can't say enough. I lived in many, many houses and I've moved many, many times. And I've always made a profit on my house because I take care of it, always. And I invest in it and I replace things when they need to. This, this whole thing is devaluing everybody's property. And we know it. And all of you guys know as well as I do, there's not going to be just three people in those, on those condos or townhouses or whatever you want to call them. You know, there's not, there's going to be probably five to 10 because that's how it And it's very upsetting. And I don't want to have to move. And I don't want to have to move because my, my representatives of my town won't stand up for the people and recognize that this is not a good thing. I know it's about money. It's all about money. It's not about our lives. Bottom line, money.
Thank you. Dorothy Loken?
I don't want to speak.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Can I have a follow-up question?
Sure, I'll take note on your question.
Yeah, I want to rephrase maybe what I said before in the form of a question.
Okay.
Again, this is Mike McAnister. Is it possible that the developer in this particular case is attempting to maximize their profits from the density of housing at the expense of parking and driving access? I can see multiple ways where the roads could be done differently so that the intersections are far enough apart so as not to cause a conflict. But it doesn't look like an attempt is made to account for that. So I'm just wondering if that's something that you all take into consideration is what the motivation of the developer is. Thank you.
Having seen no one else wishing to speak, I see no one online with their hand raised. So now I will ask if the applicant would like to respond with a rebuttal to any of the testimony that we've heard so far. And I don't think we've seen you, so please give us your name and address.
My name's Jamie Van Ochmal. I'm with LEI Engineering and Surveying in Oregon. Our address is 2564 19th Street Southeast Salem, Oregon. I'm the civil engineer surveyor for the project. A couple of the items brought up, I just wanted to provide some understanding to kind of the different concepts and layouts that we went through, working through with the city to come up with a, a solution that tried not to, not to go with a standard apartment complex. So we had multiple times looked at more of a standard three-story walk-up. We had also looked at units and configurations that were more configured like the existing subdivision where there was dead-end streets towards Boones and South Arterial. But the fire, fire chief had some concerns over access use that with even the current subdivisions that are out there and how some of that worked with those fire gates and, and back and forth. When it comes to the access ways or additional intersections along Boones or South Arterial, those are not allowed, from my understanding. You know, the original PUD had only two allowable entrances for the entire site of this property. And then together with the Woodburn Development Code and, and public works standards, we could not add any along those sections as well. So those are a couple of things I had. When it came to parking, I totally understand, you know, they worked through the, the architects was as best they could to fit with the garage and driveway spaces. I think the only way to accommodate slightly more parking, if we were to, because we did look into some, the planners had provided us with some examples during, in Smith Creek and different developments that have been approved for some guest pockets parking. I, I worked on the design and the layout of this and I don't know where to put them. And if we do put them, then we have to get substantially under the open space requirements. So.
Substantially under what?
The open space requirements. So green space. So I believe, am I correct? It's 30%? So 30% of this has to be landscaping and open space?
It looks like concrete.
So there's 30% in this currently. So if we were to add pocket spaces for additional guest parking, those type of things, I, I don't, I don't know the avenue for that, but I think we would have to be directed to do that because we'd be not meeting a requirement.
Can I ask questions?
Yes.
So you probably know the answer then, those streets, Dahlia, Day Lily, and Sunflower. So those, those block exits?
Yes.
Why are they like that?
So the, I mean, I was not a part of that.
Oh, I know. But you know the answer.
But yes, so we, we looked at a similar style layout. It was a way for, since they're not allowed to connect to Boones because of the classification of street and the distance between intersections, it was a way to provide fire access and exit. So that's why they have the fire gates with, with the locks on them and all that, that was a way to mitigate health and safety concerns.
So now all the traffic is squeezed right on down to you guys, the last ones to build?
Correct.
And?
And we're required to have our accesses off of Iris.
And do they have the emergency gates or access for fire? My question is, and I think it's partially been answered, has the fire department or the fire marshal reviewed the plan and does it meet the safety standards? Or are there removable ways that they can get through? Because I am concerned funneling all the way through to the bottom, what if, what does happen if there's a fire?
The fire marshal has reviewed these plans and given his go-ahead. There are details that would get finalized through building permits. But overall, the site plan and, and how emergency trucks navigate the site meets his requirements.
Those stubs are, correct me if I'm wrong, those stubs are turnarounds essentially for the fire truck, right, that they use? They won't have the bollards that are open only for the fire truck that you see on the other parts, on the other phases. Is that right?
And it's really just too dangerous to pull out onto Boones Ferry? Is that what the thought is?
It is. And it's one, those are our requirements.
So are you going to change the speed limit from where it goes down to 25 from 55, I think? So you're going to extend it further down?
The city would always love to reduce speed limits on these roadways, but right now, that's not even the city's jurisdiction. So ultimately, we need to get jurisdiction, go through speed studies that require approval from ODOT. Is that correct, Mackenzie? We're always trying to, yeah. I would like to see the speed slow down like most other people would in our city.
Well, I mean, just because now it, it starts where this, the old house is all.
That's the reason we don't have more driveways than we're adding onto Boones Ferry Road because people have been 55 miles an hour. We're trying to slow them down.
And I'm going to ask the question. So is your consideration of the building's 94 units to maximize your profits? I don't know if you, if you want to answer that or not, that's up to you, but I did, I did agree to ask the question.
Yeah, I think 94 units is set forth in the approval. I think the configuration of townhomes is, limits the development potential of this property or the, you know, it's tighter than it would be with a configuration of walk, three-story walk-up apartments. So I, I don't know, good way to answer that without a market analysis, but I would say I, I feel like this development was crafted to be next to a single-family residential instead of just apartments.
Okay, thank you.
So these are going to be condos for sale? Each unit is for sale? Is that how that goes or are these rentals?
At this time, that hasn't been decided. We are designing it as a multifamily development, which is not, I believe, it's not lauded. I believe it has the potential to condo and plat and sell, but that would be determined in the future. I, we've not been directed by the client to do anything with that.
Here's a question, and it's probably more for you to hear. The max density of 94, is that before or was that set after the commercial area was removed?
That was including the commercial component. Part of the. Part of the, part of the 1999 approval.
So removing it already just allowed them to be able to spread out more, there would have already always been 94?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And the only question I have is maybe more for staff, the bike mounts in the garages? That just seems like such a bizarre thing to throw in there. Any comment, any?
I like it.
Again, on the topic of traffic, just to encourage where we can, alternative modes than just driving, this encourages folks to use their bike if they already have a facility to store it in their garage.
Are there bike lanes?
No.
On Boones Ferry Road, there is a bike lane.
There's a bike lane on Boones Ferry Road where the traffic is 55 miles an hour?
No.
On the city portion, I should clarify.
In front of this development, we are adding bike lanes.
We start with the bike.
And there's no bike lane all the way down to Newburg either.
So question again more mostly for staff here. Once we are able to reduce the speed limit on Boones Ferry, would it be an idea to open up, for example, the closed-up fire lanes? Would that be something that is
considered?
Considered, yes.
I guess you're going, oh, let me say a couple of things. First of all, the approval for this, right, so there's some parameters. And I know it's a bit convoluted, there was an old PUD approved, then there was this complicated SDA, this developer's agreement, that sort of put it into place. All of those include this, the, this development, the commercial component and the multifamily tying back into Iris and not going on to the south or the east or that Boones Ferry Road.
Tying back into what?
Tying into, tying to the south. So they don't have a separate driveway from this
Oh, Iris, okay.
So tying back to the north and to the, to the east. So that, again, very deliberately so that there aren't more driveways on that South Arterial. The city does not want to add driveways unless it's absolutely necessary on these Dan keeps calling materials. These are the these are the, sort of the fastest, highest-capacity roads in the city. Where we're trying to move, really move traffic fast from one end to the other. The last thing we want is more people and more driveways making connections. So I doubt seriously if we would consider it even after we slowed the speed limit down. Ultimately, the idea is there would be some kind of light here. Now there's going to be left-turn lanes, there's going to be medians, and now you're going to have people making lefts and rights in and out of driveways while people, a lot of traffic is out there. The way to make that safe and efficient is to minimize the driveways and send as many people as we can to designated roadways. That's what Iris is designed for. Iris wasn't, Iris wasn't designed for just three phases of this to be done. Iris was designed for the residential, the single-family, and then the rest of this, meaning the commercial and the multifamily developed and to all take access off Iris.
But it ends up being the access to Boones Ferry, so is it really properly designed if it's way too narrow to handle everything that comes from the north and everything is going to be on that Phase 6? Iris is narrow. Everyone has to come down that narrow to get to, down to Iris to get to Boones Ferry. So Iris be, it'd be better if Iris were a wider street with parking? I mean, now, everybody's concerned, now everything's, all these years has been fine until we get down to the last street.
Sure, that's always the case, isn't it? The last street, when it gets developed, they say, wow, now you're putting those on. Iris was designed and built for the rest of Boones Ferry or the rest of the Boones Crossing development to be built.
So couldn't Iris be widened before apartments go in?
I guess I'd ask I don't know, what would you widen Iris to do? Make people go faster?
Well, to handle, to handle all the traffic that's coming from the first five phases.
Adding lanes to Iris, I mean, is that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I've never seen it, I should have gone by. I don't know what widening Iris would do.
It sounds like, you know, you can't get two cars down it.
I don't know that that's true. I don't believe it's true that you can't get two cars down Iris. I understand, there's parking on one side of the road.
There's no parked cars. Parked cars all the way down. Did you know the way?
The newer, the other development, the Smith development, those roads are a lot wider than Iris is. So those were definitely built with street parking in mind, and a lot of people do park on those streets. Iris is not as wide as those.
Those houses are very close together.
Yeah, they are, but they have the main streets that go through.
I'm going to interrupt again, if you want to testify, can you come forward and give your name? Otherwise okay, I'm sorry. Do any of the commissioners have any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
This is staff, I give questions.
Thank you, Dan.
So within the development, where, once a week, everybody has to put their garbage can out, since there's no street, there's no room in the street, the driveways are really close together, where do you do that? I mean, my street is technically wider than this and you, but there's so much parking, I can't put my garbage cans out once a week on my street, and it's already in existence. So this, we're speculating here that there's not going to be any street parking at all, but where do you put things like that once a week?
The plan would be that the the trash bins would be in the driveway adjacent to the drive aisle so that the trucks could come down, pick up the garbage, and then continue down to the next one. Again, there's no parking in the drive aisle at all, and it will be signed as such. So
But there's three cans, there's your garbage can, there's your yard debris bin, and your recycle bin. There is not room for all three of those in between each driveway. There's not, just in looking at the picture.
I am not sure how to respond to that. If again, the the design direction would be that they would be in the driveway. I hear what you're saying about having multiple bins and needing adequate space spacing for them. But given the width of the driveways, they should still accommodate that. There, the, if a car is parked in the driveway, it's going to be on the other side, there's a pedestrian path. If they pull up the site plan, there's a, there is a pedestrian walk between, essentially between the driveway and it would be called a parking pad, for lack of a better term. So that the, the trash bins would be able to be in the driveway and not, and not be blocked by a car in the driveway or a pedestrian walking down the pedestrian path. The driveways
Add to this slightly. Yeah, just took a look at the architectural footprints. It looks like the most narrow on the open space in front of the driveway would be eight to 10 feet on the narrowest of the units, and it would be wider on the other ones with the single-car garage. So that should accommodate three cans.
The driveway?
No, adjacent to the driveway.
In between.
In between each one, yeah. So it looks really tight, but it's, it's, there's a, it's a large scale, so there should be enough room.
Do we have any other questions from the commissioners online? Any other questions from the commissioners in the room, for staff or the applicant? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the hearing and we will deliberate. Okay.
Well, it seems like design flaws to me. I I mean, with all the testimony about Iris Street, I'm it people can't park there. There's going to be new houses going in across the street.
I would rephrase that as more of the limitations that they have are not, obviously, to their advantage in working this out. Because I do appreciate that they've gone with a townhouse model versus, you know, an apartment complex, that is good. They are meeting the parking requirements, although we understand the need for parking. In all of this, you know, and at least hearing with the history and and being that it was all kind of pushed down just to that last project, you know, it's not their fault that that, those were the conditions and those were the requirements set down all the way to their end. And we also know what the needs are for housing at the same time. I do like that the bottom road is going to get built, and so that'll loosen up a bit of the traffic that just goes here. Because at the moment, if you look at the design, this is closed, but that'll end up opening up.
I think what Dan was saying, though, that's going to be
They'll never open.
A more, didn't you say, Dan, that was going to be a higher traffic street? The one that goes to the south of this property?
But what I'm saying is, people from these streets are going to have access now to Boones Ferry on this additional side here.
True.
But in trying to fix some of the parking issues, and especially for those that do have parties, because three bedrooms, it's a family unit, you're going to have some sort of birthday party visitors. And I'm trying to think on a solution. You know, again, given that they were given a 94 max density to be able to work, and this was before they added that commercial space. So one of the things I'm thinking right now is why not, why not remove some of the practices then? So allow it to fill the 29.
Lose the city now? I don't know, I don't think that would work, it's no longer. Plus, it was part of an enormous agreement, they didn't buy up all six phases, so why don't?
I actually remember the six phases, I was around when they were doing that, at least in the 2016 range. And it was considered a unit development. A, a large development. And yes, at first it was the whole unit development, and then it got parceled off. But the folks in Unit 1, in order for it to go forward, and I might have the exact pieces wrong, but the people in Unit 1, they had to build the lift station for everybody. That was their part. The people in Unit 2, they had to put the road in for everybody, that was their part. And then as they pieced about, the very last piece was, well, when they thought they were going to do it all as one planned unit, there was, the bottom corner was going to be commercial, but that was thinking, oh, we'd have a Delia Corner grocery store, maybe a laundromat or something. And we'll dedicate a park. If you, if you look at the whole unit, that park is actually in the middle of the whole unit. And so this development, there, and it was always going to be multifamily down in that, that little triangle. But the very last piece of it, like you said, they've gotten stuck with all the leftovers that finally got to, but it's not. That's how it was planned in the beginning, way back when. This is not new. I know that some folks have said, well, I bought my house, nobody ever asked me, we haven't had another but it's out there, it's on the records, it's on the books, it's been part of the planned development. And by, so what we're really asking is, are we going to agree with leaving out the the commercial part? Well, it made sense when they planned it 20 odd, 30 years ago, but it, it doesn't really make sense right now. And by allowing them to take that out, we do have more green space, more, more access, largely slightly larger places, we've got more green space, we've got playgrounds. The city's got a nice park out of it. I grant it, I understand all of the concerns about the parking and the on-street, and if you think about it, you know, 1996, people had smaller vehicles. I live on an old street in town and I, if we've got an SUV on the left and an SUV on the right, one of us has to pull over so that the cars can go down. It's, it's an unfortunate part of what we do that we're trying to look at today, figure out what they meant to do 30 years ago, and then based on what we do today, there are the people 30 years from now going to go, what the hell, what the heck were they thinking?
How much of this development is planned for low-income housing?
I don't know that it's, that it's low-income housing, I don't think so. It's it's probably market and but Woodburn, we suffer with not having enough people, not, not having enough housing. The housing market has changed. The legislation has changed, the middle housing. And all of these are, you know, right now, our governors really focused on making sure there's enough housing and make, make sure there's enough diverse housing. And yeah, I'm happy that this is not an apartment complex. These townhomes, it looks like they've put a lot of thought into making them an attractive part. I don't think it's going to be, it's going to detract because it looks like they are using good architectural just structure.
It looks beautiful.
It looks beautiful, and I think it will be a beautiful addition. I get the parking, I get the traffic. Every time we have any kind of new planned unit in front of us, parking, traffic, I wish the people who were developing could solve our parking and our traffic problems.
There's no reason for them to if we keep approving everything they put in front of us, even though this comes up every single time. And while we know it's a problem, why are we going to allow it to continue to be a problem?
Well, I understand Woodburn has some of the strictest per-unit parking rules.
But the reality is the cars are here. So there has to be parking and, you know, trying to eliminate private transportation and clear people towards public transportation. It works in the city, it doesn't really work here.
Right.
So you know, to me, it looks like a little maze. And eliminating some of the units, to me, would be beneficial as far as acceptance and having parking space and, and just an overall better thing. I like the look of the units, but it's too dense.
There's zero guest parking, why isn't that an issue? Because people want to visit, unless we're going to just tell people, you could buy these or move into these as long as you don't know anybody outside your home. And people are going to come, they are going to park. And so what are we going to do, call the tow trucks and the police all the time? It's a problem that is never going to be solved if we don't at least consider it.
My solution is tell the city to turn that park into a parking lot. I mean, I, to be frank, I don't know why we don't have a little more, why we don't give up some of the green space for parking. But because I also want how is anyone going to play at the park if they can't park there?
It wouldn't be enough to help. Giving up all the green space, it still wouldn't be enough to help. You have to have a bigger green space. I mean, you know, fewer, fewer buildings or
I mean, so here, here would be part of the question. If they can build an apartment complex, but that can include enough parking with some visitor spots, is that going to be then what you prefer?
I like the two-story, but
They don't usually include, they don't usually include enough for visitor spots with apartment buildings, that's been one of our problems.
That's where I say, it also comes back to us where they met the parking requirements, which again, it's a mix because they've met our requirements yet.
They have, I know.
And, yeah, they've met the requirements.
Two, per housing, because there's a one garage and one on outside. I don't agree with it either, I don't like it, especially that there, the majority of the units are one-car garage with one space outside.
But if it was an apartment complex, they wouldn't have one garage per unit?
No.
They would have a parking, a parking lot with some comfort spaces. Like it or not, they meet the parking requirements. I don't believe we can say no because we don't like the parking when they've met that parking requirement.
Will the city council say no because of that? Because that's what that one's for.
You know, that's, that's actually, that's a valid question.
I mean, the city has to have some autonomy, I mean, you know, otherwise what's the point?
What's the point of having an ordinance if we don't follow it too? But that, I'm just going to step out a little bit and say that whatever our decision is, anyone that doesn't like our decision is welcome to go to the city council and voice voice their displeasure at city council. Whatever our decision is. And that is how it, that is the process, am I not, am I correct?
That, that's correct. Again, I sort of stated at the beginning, and this is more for the folks listening and the folks in the crowd, this body makes the actual land use decision, because it's what we call type-three decision. So you're the decision maker. Once this decision's made, a final decision will be rendered, will be written up, and be signed by the chair, the vice chair, and notice of that decision will be sent to everybody who submitted testimony here, it gives you a standing, that's what I talked about at the beginning of the meeting, and there is an opportunity to appeal this decision. And the appeal body for planning commission decisions is ultimately the city council. That's the ultimate, the appeal body here at the city. So, all that's accurate, and if you have questions about it, you can get on to the NRI, we can steer everybody in into what those requirements are. If I, you don't mind, because I heard a couple of comments back and forth, and again, it's, commission can deliberate as you like, but the question, the specific question about the parking issue, certainly understood, I think Dan mentioned the fact that this was a staff concern initially, and we had a lot of discussions with the applicant about it when they came in. But I want to be clear, we have standards, and the requirements of the law are that applicants meet our code standards. Our code standards are two spaces per dwelling unit, and they're meeting that code standard. So, I'm not speaking to anything else about the application, but I do not believe you would be justified to deny somebody an application, because they're meeting a code requirement that we have, even if you don't like that code requirement. If you don't like that code requirement, it's the city's job to go change it or consider it, and whatever that might entail. I think you all know that, this is more for the public's benefit, so that they understand.
Couldn't we ask that it be reconsidered?
Oh, absolutely, right, that's, you know, we've looked at parking a couple times just in the past three years. And there's different options, we can talk about that separate from this specific quasi-judicial item, you know, whether or not the city wants to consider changing their parking requirements for apartments, let's say, and consider guest parking in those items. But I don't want that to muddy this, that is not a criteria that this could be denied for, because they clearly meet that standard.
We could, we could deny it because we say, no, we want the commercial. That would be-
I'm just speaking about that parking issue, and I guess, maybe I'll leave it, that's my very strong advice, that you not deny something, because it clearly meets the code.
Clearly meets-
I have a concern that I, I'm not sure about it, the configuration of the development itself and the way the streets run, it doesn't quite seem safe, but I'm not sure how to quantify that. I feel like, you know, people are going to go faster or whatever, but how, how do they decide how wide the street needs to be, how tight the corners can be? And I know we've already talked a lot about the getting in and out of the development itself, so we don't have to go over that again, but I do have some concerns about the narrow streets and the way it's set up, is that, are there regulations and, you know, that they are meeting because of that, and can you tell me a little bit more about that?
So again, our fire marshal has reviewed these overall layout plans, as have our public work staff, our third-party traffic consultant has also taken a review of the project. There's a lot of fire code standards, this is the Oregon statewide fire code, there's also traffic engineering, civil engineering principles that go into intersection spacing and the curvature of an intersection, and there's all these elements beyond our local development ordinance that govern the design of these factors. Does that help answer the question, Bill?
I think it does. So, thank you.
So are these different than actual streets? You've called them drive something or another?
Yeah, they look like streets, but they are not public streets like Iris or Boones Ferry or the South Arterial.
So they have to meet a different criteria, or they're not held to the same?
That's correct, they are, they're, they're considered dry viles in our development ordinance, so they, they have a minimum width they have to provide, twenty-six feet comes from the fire code. That is, it allows for, I believe it's a, like a loading prep area for one truck, and then a second truck to be able to pass by it, is what was described to me. So that's where that minimum width comes from.
How do they compare to the Smith Creek alleys?
They're actually wider than those Smith Creek alleys, those are twenty feet.
The ones where they drive into their garages?
That's right.
Wider than that?
And these are twenty-six feet wide.
Any other deliberation?
I'm just wondering if you have an option to send it back? Rethinking.
Hold on. It says it clearly in my notes. So, we can move to approve, we can move to approve with modifications, we can move to deny per stated, and we have to state the reason that we denied it. And that's it, so we can approve as presented, approve with modifications, or deny, but we need to state a criteria under which we're denying.
I brought up on the screen a recommended motion that includes the changes in that memo I entered into the record.
Well, here's the thing, though, if we deny it because of the commercial aspect, that does not remove the parking requirements.
Give some chance to think.
They can still have ninety-four, they can have more need for parking, because now you've got some kind of business there that's going to need some parking.
Well, I move, we deny the application based on the requested modification of conditions.
I second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, which is you're opposing the motion to deny, say, nay? Nay? And I think we have at least one.
I'll go ahead and say nay, I, just because they do meet the requirements.
Just, I can clarify, and I pause, that was three to two vote in favor of the motion.
Yeah, I would ask, you know, I'm going to actually ask you to do a roll call vote for me, so, because I couldn't tell exactly what was what.
Sure. Commissioner Bartel?
I vote with the way the motion was stated, sorry.
I just wanted to repeat it so everyone understands, and forgive me-
Okay, sure. So I said aye, meaning I vote to deny it, I deny the denial because of the items that were requested.
Right, so it was a motion and seconded to deny based on the, specifically on the modification of conditions related to commercial, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin?
I'm going to deny it.
So you would vote aye in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Thanks. Commissioner Ann Desmaye?
Nay.
Vice Chair Ellsworth?
Nay.
Commissioner Corny?
Aye.
All right, we got three to two, I just wanted to confirm that for deny.
So I believe we have denied the application as presented.
That's correct.
Can I just say one thing? Is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't understand why there's so much talk about whether it's a condo or townhouse or a three-story apartment complex. Where, I, and all the paperwork I've seen, I'm under the impression that it's going to be townhouses, but when they get up here and say, well, we could have-
Yes.
Turned them into apartments, three-story.
Instead of this.
Right, but when the lady was up here talking, she was saying that they found no benefit in doing that, that it wouldn't create more parking, or it wouldn't create anything, so that's why they're going with the townhouse. And as a homeowner, that affects all of us, because a multifamily three-story apartment complex can bring all kinds of people into the-
But you can't vet people who are-
No, but I can say something about it lowering my value of my home.
Everybody looks for the bottom line, whether it's homeowner, the building, and they-
Yeah, but we have other reasons, though, too, it's just not working.
I'm going to bring us back for just a couple minutes, as chair's prerogative, you can continue to speak, but I am going to take a five-minute break.
But before you officially did that, and I was just looking for the assistant city's attorney assistants, if you didn't mind, I would, I would prefer to actually come back, maybe at our next scheduled meeting, to bring a final decision back, so that we could review it before I actually ask the vice chair to sign it. I wanted to make sure that I had, I could assemble the correct findings, I'd review them with the commissioners, so that you could review them for a vote. We don't always do that, but we sometimes do.
Moving to continue this hearing?
No, all we're requesting is that you make a motion that the actual written decision returns at the next meeting for review before it's signed by the chair.
That's all, we would look for a motion in a second for us to take that action. Is that, is that understood?
So you want to make a motion?
If you would.
Yes, I move there being an order written for review of the-
The next meeting.
Planning commission at the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hearing done, motion carries. We are now in recess for five minutes.
Dan, thank you for fixing that, thanks for fixing that air conditioning, I'm shaking. Air conditioning, go home and get my cool. Somebody's going to-
Coming up next.
There are mortgage issues.
I have a really short, I mean-
You're only doing-
Yeah.
I see.
It's tough to do it, but if you're already in the house, I can tell you.
I'm coming, after him.
Feisty.
Oh, yeah, I know. I'm sure the rest of us have missed the meeting, so I'm excited. That was the reason why I came today, too.
You'll be here next time. You know, I saw, I saw in the grocery store, and I said, please, that is very short. And then I lost, I'm like, oh, it's not.
Not a, a check guy's in charge, he can shop all the time. I was a hard, you know, every- I really, yeah, I really started that. Yeah, we have that often happens. Yeah, so you spoke to where-
That would be a good thing to do, that's what you're going to say, and that's what you're going to do.
Well, Mary, next day.
I never dare, I'm like, I'm not-
I'm about to make one.
I mean, that was a whole other thing.
Do you park, you park that near us?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, that was the case.
So, um, but-
The next session was the same.
But, yeah.
Right, and why is that?
So, um, so, uh, someone who thinks that, uh, trying to overreach the conditions-
It must be.
Uh, someone who thinks that, uh, trying to overreach the conditions- They can change.
Do you have questions about this?
That's it.
All right, let's move on.
They think that going to have, uh, modifying such that, that-
Yeah.
You are just-
I knew you didn't, you know, whatever.
Like Charlie, Charlie's getting ready to retire. Well, thank you, because it's hard.
I'm in Brooklyn.
I was telling many of us.
Oh, I- Glad you came, I didn't wait until I was up.
I hear you, but, yeah.
All right.
Now send it to me, I'll look.
So it says it's a public park. It's a public park.
I was...
Of the ones in vehicles.
Well, even my house, I only have a car. And I can't do like all of them, so.
I think it's trending, it's still the...
And that's why this is what we call this.
These are... Are you gonna walk across the pier? And then I'm gonna have to set me somewhere. I know.
Glad you're still here, Deb. I don't know what you're looking at. Can you see us all? Do you know that we're still milling about for a second?
Yep, I can see the ladies at the... At the dais.
Okay, one second, we're almost there. I sometimes forget you're there and I'm not sure what you're seeing.
So how are we doing on time? All right. Are we, are we ready to get back? Hello?
Hi, Maddie.
Get back into session.
Forgot. So then you have a definite position you're running for?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I kind of thought they were at large.
I'm gonna reconvene this meeting of the Woodburn Planning Commission. As soon as the rest of our commissioners sit down.
You know, you were doing a great job right until...
Well, yes, all right. Welcome back, everybody. Commissioner Bartel, are you back?
I never left.
I can hear you. Okay. So, thank you all. I would like to open the hearing on Annexation 22-05, Butteville and Parr Road Annexation. I'm now going to open the hearing of ANX 22-05 and ZMC 22-05, an annexation of public right-of-way generally located at the intersection of Butteville Road and Parr Road, and assignment of the Southwest Industrial Reserve, the SWR zoning district designation to that. Hey. With this hearing being on an annexation application, the commission will be asked to provide a recommendation to the city council and not find a final decision on the application. So declarations, I will first ask if any of the commissioners have had any ex parte contact with the applicant or other individuals? Any site visits? No? Any other conflict or bias that would preclude you from making an impartial decision on this application? Hearing none. Are there any challenges to the commission on the declarations? Hearing none, I will ask Mackenzie to read the hearing statement.
Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require the commencement of the hearing. This statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. Woodburn Development Ordinance Sections 4.01.01, 4.01.07, 4.01.02, 4.01.03, 5.04.01, 5.04.04, and the Woodburn Comprehensive Plan Goal G2. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentation, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a planned or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval lists sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open.
Thank you. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my vice chair, excuse me. Chris Kerr, Community Development Director. This will be pretty brief, this is not complicated at all. But I'm gonna walk through it, and it is a bit unusual, I'll say that about it. So this is specifically a Type IV land use application package. It includes an annexation, and as with all annexations, there's a zoning map change involved because, of course, we don't have zoning on property that's not in the city. Once it comes in, we have to apply a zoning designation to it. This particular property is only right-of-way. It's not a private lot, it's not privately owned, it's not a lot of record, it's just right-of-way. But it still gets zoning applied to it. In this case, it's going to be SWR. Now, the planning commission is just gonna be making a recommendation for this as are required under Type IV applications. The city council makes final decisions on annexations. Staff report and its attachments are officially entered into the record. And just to kind of bring us around to where we're at, we're looking at our favorite part of town, southwest corner. A lot going on out here. And I just wanted to kind of show you, this is specifically for a portion of Butteville Road around the Parr Road intersection that we're gonna be discussing annexing into the city. You can see I-5, and the yellow line that you see is the urban growth boundary. Everything in red that's shaded is already annexed into the city. We've just been slowly annexing property and picking up a lot of this area within the UGB. So everything north on top of that yellow line is within the current UGB is eligible for annexation currently into the city. Property we're talking about is this right-of-way out here along Parr Road at Butteville. It's basically the bridge that goes over I-5, and it'll tie into where we already have the rest of Butteville Road annexed into the city. And the reason behind this is pretty simple. The reason we're doing this annexation is so that we can get what we call jurisdictional control over that intersection. We were talking in the last case a little bit about, can the city change the speed limit? What can we do along Boone's Ferry Road? Nothing, because we don't have jurisdiction over it. As you know, there's a lot of right-of-way that's in the city limits, you know, all of 99, on 214, but we don't have jurisdictional control over it. So as you know, we can't fix a pothole on ODOT's property, even though it's within the city limits. It's the same situation out here on Butteville Road and this area. Now, because there's been a lot of development activity going on out here for the past probably three years, and the city actually does have some long-range plans for making some improvements out in this area, particularly on the roadways, this is some of the active development that's going out here. You're familiar with the spec development. Allison Way Apartments, obviously Amazons on the north. And to the lower part of this, you see the Colugan subdivision, Parr Road, Smith. All of these are impacting all these roadways down here. And a real critical piece of that is this little thumb that's sticking out at the bottom here at Parr Road. That intersection has a lot of safety concerns at currently. It's got some real visibility issues. They've been there since it was first designed. It's just a badly designed intersection currently within the county's jurisdiction. The city wants to get jurisdiction over that so that we can plan for and control what improvements happen. As you know, we've been collecting a lot of fees and/or just call it money from the surrounding property owners to make improvements along a lot of these right-of-ways. One of those areas is right here at this area that I've highlighted here. This is that Parr Road Butteville intersection that we're talking about. So the city's been collecting money for a while from a lot of these developments. And because it's still located in the county, it would, the onus is on the county to make those improvements. And to be honest with you, their idea of improvements and what happens out there may not be the same as the city's. We have longer range plans for how we'd like to see this, what happens out here, and what kind of improvements take place. So the whole point of this annexation is so that we can bring it into the city, first with the, just bringing in as an annexation. Then the next step is we actually get the jurisdictional control of these. This was initiated by the city council. I had a very long discussion with them probably two months ago about this issue, supportive of, we've had several meetings with Marion County staff as well as Marion County Board of Commissioners about this decision, because they're the ones who have to make a determination as to whether or not they want to give up jurisdiction of this. They're in favor of it, the surrounding developers, and actually the actual property owners around it. I heard actually from, I think, every property owner that abuts this right-of-way. They're in support of this, as you can imagine. And the developers around here want to see those improvements happen. If you recall back to something like, say, the spec development and that Brighton Point residential development, we had a specific condition of approval that said you will pay X amount of money to the county, because it's still in the county's jurisdiction, for improvements out here to take place, et cetera, et cetera. And then we added a clause that said, unless the city were to take jurisdiction of this, in which case that money will be given to the city. So once this jurisdictional transfer takes place, the city will have finished an intergovernmental agreement that we have with the county, not to add another layer of regulations and process to this, but it's important. That IGA, that agreement that we are going to enter into that's been drafted and been vetted so far and we think it's gonna be approved by the board of county commissioners. That agreement will specifically say that money that's being collected from developers right here in town that's been spent on making improvements there is going to come to the city so that we can use that money for our planning and our infrastructure improvements. Based on those reasons, this is, again, council initiated it. It's a, it allows the city to control Butteville Road north of that roundabout. We have, again, we, there's a lot of different things we'd like to do there. I don't know exactly what they are, all are, to be honest with you. We're still looking at some of that. But we need the money to make that happen, both in planning and the physical improvements that have to happen. Based on those reasons, staff recommending approval. Again, there's obviously not really any development interest involved here. Property's not gonna be developed, it's purely right-of-way. And again, we have support from Marion County, who currently has jurisdiction. This is one step of all these improvements in this long-range plan for us to make improvements out in that southwest transportation corridor. This is one piece of it. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Would we then own the overpass?
No, so what, that's a great question, because, so if you look at this, go. No.
If so, could you just put a lane under the freeway?
It's only humorous because it's 9:30 at night.
Well, no, it's humorous and it's not, it's like, okay, but there's this, this thing that goes over the freeway.
There is, so when you look at this, again, think about an annexation just as an area of land that gets annexed. We already, most of I-5 is already located in the city, but it's still, there's still an agreement that we have with ODOT that they're in charge, that they can maintain. We don't do things on ODOT's right-of-way. The same thing takes place here. That bridge, that roadway that runs across there, that's actually, all of that, so this area you see is what gets annexed. But when we talk about this jurisdictional control, ODOT's not gonna allow us to go out and have jurisdictional control over any part of their highway, just that bridge that goes over the top. And with that, we still need authorization from them to make any kind of improvements, even if we want to put signage on that bridge. We have to run that through ODOT. There's already an existing agreement the county has. We'll just take that over. No, we're not taking over anything on I-5. Good question.
Well, no, I was thinking if something needed to happen with that, who's responsible for...
We were thinking of a new interchange here, but we can't.
Yeah, right?
We're gonna grab a little wider.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So what you're saying is you can't turn I-5 into a tollway to really bring more money into the city?
Not yet.
Okay, just checking.
Are we ready for a motion?
If nobody else has any questions?
Oh, we need to talk to the applicant.
So technically, the city's the applicant, but it'd be good if we walked through the hearing process, because there's actually a property owner nearby who wanted to testify.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just wondering if anybody had any more questions in front of the next step. Okay, I would now, I would like to, we're the applicant, so does the city have anything more to present?
I should say this, Renata's technically the applicant of record. I don't, I didn't need to bring her up, but if you wanted to do this, Renata, wait.
We'd love to meet you.
She is doing great work. She's working on all these complicated elements out here and just been a real asset making these happen. She does a lot of the hard, the hard work, and I just take your credit.
Good evening, commissioners. I do attend some of your meetings, observe online. So Renata Wakely Special Projects. You recently appointed Commissioner Corning to serve on the Urban Reserve Area UGB Expansion. That's one of my projects. Also tied into the development that your, Chris has referred to, so this is part of the plan. But yes, I did assist his wonderful staff in putting the application together, but he's presenting this information because he does it best. Thanks.
Okay, do any commissioners have any questions for Renata? I'm trying to follow the rules. Okay. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this?
I will do, I need to sign the agreement.
No, you can please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Greg Blazer, 8097 Parr Road, Jervis, Oregon. And I have the property that adjoins the, right alongside the overpass. And I personally witnessed several accidents. Really, one of them was extremely serious at the Parr Road and Butteville Road intersection. The county, so in my experience, I believe the city will handle it much better than what the county does. They really have no interest in, and they don't even want to replace the guardrails as they get damaged every couple of weeks, so. So that was all I had to say, is I'm, I would be for it, I think, because it'll be, bring safety, better management, and a positive growth. So, thank you.
I think you have to make a right turn, you go out Parr Road and then make a right turn.
I'm sorry, are you looking for?
Oh, you get on.
Onto his property?
No, onto the road.
Yeah, so you...
There you go, that's a close-up of it.
So you go out Parr Road and then turn right.
Yeah, the worst accident that I saw, I was at the gate at our property, and a car was going way too fast. Don't know what they're, what they were doing, but they went straight across and their car landed out in that field.
Wow. Coming down Parr Road and they just kept going?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And they were probably doing 50, 60 mile an hour when they hit the guardrail. Anyway, that intersection needs help.
All right. Does anyone want to speak in opposition of this project? Hearing none. There's no need for a rebuttal, so I will close the public hearing and will deliberate.
I think this is great.
Thank you. It makes sense.
Commissioner Bartel, do you have any comments?
I think it's also great.
Okay, well, hearing no more deliberation, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommend ANX 22-05 and ZMC 22-05 Butteville Parr Intersection. I move the planning commission recommend ANX twenty-two dash zero five and ZMC twenty-two dash zero five Butteville Parr intersection right-of-way uh, to the city council for approval.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Please recommend this to the commission. City council, pardon me. Oh, it is now nine forty. And I would like to continue the workshop or move the workshop out to another.
I move we continue the legislative amendment of the WDO related to, related to trees to another meeting.
I second. All in favor? Aye. We needed a motion, but. All right.
Well done.
Any business from the commission? Any updates from staff?
I, I didn't will. So coming into our next meeting, so things have changed a bit from where we were headed before. Uh, staff will bring you back, will come back. We'll have, uh, some findings for you to review. Again, that's a bit atypical for you. We do these all the time at the city council. Essentially, staff's gonna prepare a draft of what we think are, uh, findings based on the testimony and the discussions we heard from the planning commission for denial. For you to review them and you would need to formally approve them at that meeting. Um, you can obviously massage them and modify them. So you understand, they're your findings. We're just gonna draft them for you and put them in, uh, more findings format.
Help us out by redoing the whole thing?
Yeah, we will do just that. Okay? And the, uh, the other thing is I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna address how we bump the legislative amendments. So if you understand, today was gonna be a workshop because I think it's worthy of some more discussion. And then we were hoping to come back the next meeting for our public hearing. Technically, our next meeting, we've already pre-noticed as a public hearing. We have some early notice requirements for these kinds of legislative items. I'm not worried about it. We'll just address it somehow on the agenda, but the idea is I still want to definitely have that discussion on trees at the next workshop. It's really important.
We're not having that as a public hearing, though.
Right, I think it's already noticed as one, but we'll just have to open it and probably massage that, that agenda. I'm not sure exactly how at the time, off the top of my.
I've, I've still got problems with that. I mean, I don't know.
Sure, that's why we wanted to have that workshop.
Yeah, um, it's noticed as a public hearing, so that may, you know, we may have more people here expecting there to be a public hearing on the legislative item. Um, but there's nothing that prevents us from amending the agenda to just say this is now a workshop instead. It's a little less strict than our quasi judicial items where like people come and they kind of have a right to speak at the meeting that's noticed. This one, we noticed it, but we're gonna probably just push off the legislative item. Um, the, the formal hearing process and then still just have the workshop.
And just if someone shows up, honestly, great. I hope someone does show up and has some comments. I'm sure you all will take their testimony.
If someone shows up, can we listen to their comments?
You're more.
That would be great.
Workshops give you the flexibility to allow, um, testimony if you want to. Um, it also goes the other way.
But we're not locked into some kind of, uh.
You do, you do not have to hold a hearing.
If it's a public hearing, are we?
No.
Then thirty days from that, something else happens.
You are not gonna have to approve amendments for, or make a final recommendation to the city council at your next hearing.
Okay, so, so I have, I have a question. So somebody was mentioning that, uh, they met the design, that the parking met the design standards. Maybe, do we need to reconsider our design standards? Maybe we need to require overflow parking of a certain percentage or a certain number or something?
There are, there are a lot of different options for more parking. I, I'm gonna give you my kind of twenty seconds thoughts on it. Just kind of the requirements, the rules, et cetera. You're all familiar with the middle housing requirements that came through related to someone right off of townhouses, triplex, quadplexes, cottage houses. I think that's, that's the litany of middle housing. You are not, per state law, allowed to require any more than two parking spaces for any of that housing, period.
Chris, that's also.
That's not up to, for debate. However.
It's one.
What did I say?
You said two.
Right, excuse me.
It's one per unit. So like a triplex has to have three, a quadplex has to have four. Well, I guess it doesn't even have to, but you can require.
You can't require more than one.
More. So like, think of, um, I'm trying to think of a good example, like, um, like a, like a regular multifamily right now, ours is two per unit. Um, so if you think of, you know, and that doesn't matter how many bedrooms the unit has, it's just two per unit. Um, but if you have a duplex, um, you know, it's really just one for each of those. And triplex is one for each of those units.
No.
So if those became apartments, those, then would it be one per apartment? I mean, if they became rented.
It isn't. And here's, I know this is odd. We'll discuss this more later, but I'm just letting you know, there are guardrails where you're not gonna be able to allow more than one parking space for any middle housing. We'll go over what that definition is, but for the record, that's not true of apartments. Apartments are not middle housing. You can change, cities are allowed to change the minimum parking requirements for apartments. Okay? That, that makes sense, because it's not middle housing. I know, that's right, that's right. I know it's odd, but that's a state requirement.
Right.
And then we'll get into what you just looked at, whether that was a town.
So you're gonna clear all this up for us anyway. I know.
We will. There, there is an opportunity for you to do it. Ultimately, process-wise, you can suggest anything you like, but only the city council uh, can initiate code changes. So you can't say, hey, Chris, I wish you'd do that. I can't, don't have that ability. The city council must make that recommendation, direct staff to do it via a resolution. Okay? But you all can talk about that and I'll bring it up the next meeting if you are considering. All right?
A lot of the housing things have changed or how we implement them have changed. Um, one of the things that you had mentioned in the last one is we can't require something different from a middle house than a single-family house either.
At all.
At all.
That's correct.
All right, anything else from staff?
I just wanted to let you know that I had a, uh, the city council passed a, uh, master fee schedule adjustment, I guess, ordinance. Essentially, we changed our planning fees. Just because I think it's a fun thing to say, the planning fees in this city, which is the planning review fees that we do in-house, haven't been modified since two thousand and eight. So they were quite out of date. We brought them up to essentially brought them up to, I think, a thirty-five percent, um, brought them up for inflation at a thirty-five percent rate for, which came by CPI. Plus a few massages and modifications, but that's a good thing. It was outdated. We should be, we should have been collecting more money and now we'll do a better job. That was all.
So where's Heidi Hinchall?
I'm sorry. I, I was, should have introduced her. Did she drop off? She did.
Was she here?
Some of you know, so some of you know Heidi, Heidi is an associate planner, uh, that we have at the city. I want to say six months or so she's been here. And I was, she was gonna come to this meeting because I thought this would be a nice, fun, easy meeting to watch. And she, she was online watching.
It would have been a great for her to be here, wouldn't it? It'd scare her.
She'll watch a little bit.
She'd stop asking for a raise probably. Or start, I don't know.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Adjourned. Charlie?
Thank you, Deb.
Bye, everyone.